Good morning. It's 10:00 AM, January 14th, 2014. Welcome to the Department of Motor Vehicles' public hearing on the regulatory proposal to adopt Article 3.7 in Division 1, Chapter 1 of Title 13 of the California Code of Regulations, which was published in the California Regulatory Notice Register on November 29th, 2013. I am Assistant Chief Counsel Brian Suble at the Department of Motor Vehicles. I am also the department's contact person for this regulatory proposal, and I will be the chairperson of this morning's hearing. We are here today in the Assembly Room at 2415 First Avenue, Sacramento, California, to accept comments on the regulatory proposal, which is identified as Regulatory Notice Number 2013-1113-02, and is entitled Autonomous Vehicles. The specific subject matter of this regulatory proposal is the requirements for the testing of autonomous vehicles on public roads in California by manufacturers. Under the rulemaking provisions of the Administrative Procedures Act, this is the time and place set for the presentation of statements, arguments, and contentions orally and in writing for or against changes in the Department of Motor Vehicles regulatory proposal. This is a quasi-legislative hearing in which the Department of Motor Vehicles carries out a rulemaking function that has been delegated to it by the legislature. Witnesses presenting testimony at this hearing will not be sworn, nor will we engage in extensive cross-examination of the witnesses. We will take under submission all written and oral comments submitted or made during this hearing. We will respond to these comments in writing in our final statement of reasons, which will be a part of our final regulatory package submitted to the Office of Administrative Law. This rulemaking hearing will be recorded and transcribed. The transcription, together with all exhibits and evidence presented during this hearing, will be made a part of the rulemaking record. The record of this hearing will be kept open until the close of business today. In order to receive additional relevant evidence in written form, we have prepared a three-part exhibit, which is packaged together and was made available at the back of the door when you entered the room. Part 1 of that package is the Notice of Proposed Action, which was published in the California Notice Register on November 29th. Part 2 is the express terms, or the proposed language of the regulations. Part 3 is a statement of reasons for this proposal. Copies of these documents were mailed to all interested parties who had requested rulemaking notices from the department, and other parties who may be affected by this proposal. Those documents have also been available on the department's Internet website. The scope of this hearing is limited to receiving comments, statements, and contentions on the proposed regulations, which I specified earlier. If you have any other issues you wish considered as regulations, you may petition the Department of Motor Vehicles pursuant to Government Code Section 11347. These other issues will not be considered at this morning's hearing. As you entered the room, we were offered an opportunity to sign in or register for the hearing. The sign-in sheet allows us to keep an orderly schedule for those persons who are present and wish to speak. Signing in also ensures that any changes we make to the rulemaking proposal will be mailed to you before we finalize those changes, and provide you with the opportunity to comment again on any changes that we make. You may sign in at any time during the hearing. We'd also like to note that this Department of Motor Vehicles headquarters campus is a secure building, and so there are security guards on the other floors of the building. We would ask you if you have to leave the room to keep, refine yourself to the area pretty in close proximity, because there are confidential areas of the building that we do not allow public access. The security guards will be checking for the visitor badges, which you should have been issued when you entered the building. We will listen to oral comments for this proposal from those who have signed in. After we hear from everyone who initially registered to speak, we will hear from anyone who arrived later and wishes to present comments. With that, we're going to go ahead and start with our first registered speaker, Mr. Armand Feliciano, from the Association of California Insurance Carriers.
When you come up to speak, can you state your first name, spell your last name? Again, repeat the organization that you may be representing, if any. That's just so that the court reporter can get it all correctly for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Suble. Armand Feliciano, A-R-M-A-N-D. Last name is F-E-L-I-C-I-A-N-O, representing the Association of California Insurance Companies. I want to thank the Department of Motor Vehicles, Brian, for holding this hearing together. I think it's an important issue for folks to be heard on. I also want to thank DMV for working with us during the workshop process and including the surplus lines as an option for uninsured care, so we appreciate that. We did submit comments yesterday, written comments. I just want to highlight some of those comments today. After reviewing the proposed regs, one of our main concerns is that we want to make sure that the proposed regs satisfy the APA standards of authority, clarity, and consistency. And off the bat, I just want to highlight Section 227.06, Evidence of Financial Responsibility. We reviewed that following language, and it's in our view at this point, as far as the authority, looking at SB 1298, it's our position that the commercial policy should be the insurance that covers autonomous vehicle under the testing purposes, during the testing purposes at this point. We don't believe that it should include personal coverage of the driver itself. Now, we went back and looked at SB 1298 just to make sure it's clear that that's the goal of the legislation, and we did find several vehicle code sections related to that, and let me just read that to you. Vehicle Code Section 38750B3 and C3 makes that abundantly clear, that the liability, at least for the testing purposes at this point, is under commercial policy, so we just want to make that clear.
Can I ask you one question? Do those sections specifically say that it has to be a commercial policy, and do those questions specifically say that that is the cap, the limit, the only universe of insurance coverage for the testing of vehicles on public streets?
So, our reading of those two subdivisions is that it is under commercial policy.
Okay, thank you.
And I would note that there's not one mention, at least on SB 1298, about application of the personal automobile insurance coverage. And I think it's good logic, right? We're talking about testing at this point. We're not talking about regular driving for these autonomous vehicles. So, along the lines of clarity as well, we want to make sure that folks understand that it is commercial that we're talking about. One interpretation, obviously hypothetically, something happens to the car, the position of the insurance personal coverage would be that commercial is the sole coverage. Now, I don't know the way 227.06 is going to be interpreted by manufacturers. Are they going to turn around and say, "Well, it says 'in addition to' under 227.06," so in our view, personal coverage will be primary, and then commercial kicks in, which I think that would be an ambiguity that's really not needed at this point when we feel 1298 covers it specifically that's going to be commercial. Along the lines of consistency, because SB 1298 says one thing, and 227.06 says another, we feel that's contradictory in its sense. So, we do have a suggested language, not going to read it now, but we would ask to work with DMV and the Department of Insurance to clarify or revise 227.06 to make sure that we're talking about commercial policy. We do have language we suggested. We look forward to working with DMV on this, and I'm available for any questions or comments later on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Dwight Koo from CSAA Insurance Group. You do not wish to present any comments? No? Okay. We'll move to our next registered speaker, which is Nicole Barranco from the Volkswagen Group.
I'm Nicole Barranco, N-I-C-O-L-E. Last name is Barranco, B-A-R-R-A-N-C-O. I'm with the Volkswagen Group of America. I'm also accompanied by our senior staff engineer, Kaushik Raghu. It's K-A-U-S-H-I-K. Last name is R-A-G-H-U. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Notice of Proposed Regulatory Action regarding the testing and use of autonomous vehicles on California's public roadways.
Good morning. Thank you.
I'm Nicole Barranco, Director of State Government Affairs for Volkswagen Group of America, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Volkswagen AG. We're one of the world's leading automobile manufacturers, and more significantly to this group here today, according to a recent Booz Allen Hamilton study, Volkswagen employs more researchers and spends more on R&amp;D than any other corporation in the world, at nearly $12 billion annually. Also Volkswagen represents several AG brands, including Audi, Bentley, Bugatti, Lamborghini, and Volkswagen. We employ about 5,900 employees in the U.S., and we have six locations here in California, including our research lab in Belmont, California, where we do a lot of the testing on autonomous vehicles. So, thanks again for having us here today. We appreciate all the work that has gone into these comments, and I know personally that you've gone to great lengths to research this and learn as much as you can about autonomous vehicles and what is required for safe roadways, so thank you very much for that. And our comments are actually quite minimal because of the great work you've done, so thank you again. We do have a few points, and I have submitted written comments that'll be more comprehensive, but I just wanted to touch on a few points.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Okay. The first issue deals directly with the definition of the autonomous vehicle test driver, and what I'm referring to is Section 22718, where the regulation requires the test driver to be in either immediate physical control of the vehicle, or to be able to take over immediate control. And Volkswagen supports that definition, but in Section 22702 of the definitions, it requires the test driver to be seated in what's commonly referred to as the driver's seat. So, referring back to the statute, it was certainly contemplated that there may not be a person in the driver's seat. The statute reads, "The definition of operator is the person who is seated in the driver's seat, or if there is no person in the driver's seat, causes the technology to engage." So, in Section 22702, it restricts the test driver to occupying that driver's seat, and we contemplate an occasion where, with redundant controls in what is referred to or known as the passenger seat, we like to call it the co-driver seat, that there might be an occasion where you have the controls on the right side.
I think when we wrote that definition, we were looking specifically at the definitions that would apply for testing.
Okay.
And when you look at the statute, 38750, it specifically requires that for the testing phase, that there be a driver actually sitting in the driver's seat, and I think that may be the exact language in the statute. So, to the extent that it's in the regulation, it's just a reflection of what is in the statute. And when we were drafting, we were guided by the regulatory approval principles, that we can't expand on the scope of what is already set forth in the statute, so.
I understand that. It seems like, I don't know if you experienced, that there may be a conflict in the statute, where it defines operator, and certainly contemplates the operator not being in the driver's seat. And then later on, it does talk about being in the driver's seat, so.
Right, and that's kind of, that may be the confusion that, and the way we thought we handled this process was, we were going with the testing regulations first, and then what I like to call the deployment regulations. So, there may be, you know, in the future out there, vehicles that will not necessarily require a driver to be in the driver's seat. And I think that the goal of the legislation was, at least for the testing purposes, you have a driver in the seat of the vehicle. Now, when we get to that deployment stage, you may have completed your testing and are ready to deploy vehicles on the roadway that don't require the driver in the driver's seat. And so I think if you see a kind of a confusion in the statute, there isn't necessarily confusion in the statute, because it's talking about two different points in time.
Okay. I think it would be difficult to deploy that ability without having first tested it, though, but.
I see your point.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. So, the next salient point to talk about is reporting every instance where the vehicle disengages from autonomous mode, and I'm referring to 227.46. As currently worded, this requirement could be understood that we are required to report every instance of disengagement from autonomous mode. And we think the intention of the DMV is more to report when there are unexpected occurrences that we have disengaged, and so we propose some clarifying language that may reflect that.
Yeah, and we appreciate the suggestions, specifically with respect to that section, because, you know, as we stated in our workshop, we had a goal of finding out, you know, for safety reasons, as well as being able to, in the future, when we envision testing people for operating vehicles that we would like to know. It would be better to know those scenarios where an operator would have to take control, and so we anticipated that we may get some additional feedback that would help us to clarify that section, so we really appreciate the additional comments that you've given us here.
Great, great. Okay. And then another matter is regarding the test driver qualifications. We understand that your intention is to require only the safest drivers to be test drivers. However, we're concerned that the statute may be a little more stringent than necessary. A researcher actually sitting quite close to me has driven over 40,000 miles in the past year, and limiting them to one point on their driver's license may be quite stringent, particularly when the point occurs either in a different state, so it doesn't translate one for one, or when the point occurs when they're not in autonomous mode, so it's not relevant. So, we request you to take another look at that and see if there's another way to check the safety of the drivers. Of course, that's our main concern as well.
We'll take a look at that suggestion. However, since about 1963, the state of California has been a part of the Driver's License Compact, which includes all of the other jurisdictions in the United States, and it requires us to have a recognition of incidents and convictions that occur in other states. And so, to the extent that there may be some issues with respect to, you know, translating a violation that occurred in another state, we're required by our participation in the compact to take that into recognition.
Okay, okay. The next item is reporting accidents, Section 227.44. As currently written, this requirement could be understood to mean that a test vehicle must report accidents that involve the vehicle even when it's driving outside of autonomous mode. Accidents involving a test vehicle should be required to report to the DMV when the accident occurred while the vehicle was being operated in autonomous mode. Test vehicles that are involved in accidents while an automated driving system is disengaged should not have to use the form, but should follow existing procedures for the exact accident reporting in a normal, non-automated vehicle. So, we propose language on that, so it would simply be reporting accidents from the autonomous mode. And to further that, we talked about distinguishing between, you know, bumping into something causing minor damage, or having a minimum threshold, and we recommended for that a $2,000 minimum threshold for reporting to ease the regulatory burden on both the automaker and the DMV.
Thank you.
Another item is references the vehicle registration and certificates of title, so I'm referring to Section 227.48. This section requires that a person should not drive, move, or leave standing an autonomous vehicle on public roads unless the department has been notified. And we believe that this section may mean only when it's being operated in autonomous mode, so that a vehicle that's not being operated in autonomous mode may be able to drive, move, or leave standing on public roads, just as any other vehicle would be able to. So, we proposed some clarifying language on that.
Okay.
And I think this is my last issue. Two more. Vehicles excluded from testing, 227.52. There are certain vehicles that have been excluded for testing, such as trailers, motorcycles, and heavy vehicles. Regarding that section, Volkswagen questions the DMV's reasons for disallowing the testing of certain types and classes of vehicles under these regulations, provided that the regulated entity in question meets the requirements of that regulation, which are designed to ensure reasonably safe safety, which are designed to ensure reasonable safety is maintained during the testing of prototype vehicles while operating in an automated mode. So, the bottom line is, we request that it shouldn't matter what type of vehicle is being tested, and certainly there's rationale for other heavier vehicles or other vehicles to be allowed for testing, and we think it's limiting by the state to disallow those, so we also have some proposed language on that. I'll wrap up here, but we very much appreciate all your attention to this matter, and your willingness to consider our concerns, and we look forward to working with you, to continuing the dialogue, and coming up with this great regulation that'll help propel California to be the leader that it already is in autonomous vehicle testing. And we'd like the opportunity, I know you already stated it, that we'd have the opportunity to further comment, but you know we're always available, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Ron Medford from Google.
Good morning. My name's Ron Medford. I'm the Director of Safety for the Self-Driving Program at Google. I'm here today to offer our comments on the proposed testing regulations for autonomous vehicles. I want to begin by applauding the department for the effort that it has made to reach out to stakeholders by holding two public workshops already, and today holding this public hearing. We think this type of openness is necessary in order to help you understand and help the public understand how the technology works, and thereby write regulations that strike the appropriate balance between public safety, flexibility, and simplicity. We have been especially pleased with the willingness of the department's staff to learn the issues related to the development and testing of the technology, and believe that to a significant extent, that understanding is reflected in the proposed testing regs. Google sincerely believes that autonomous vehicle technology has a potential to transform the way the public thinks and uses, thinks about and uses motor vehicles. We ultimately want the technology to be widely available, and to enhance the safety experience of, as well as access to, individual transportation. And we believe that California has a unique opportunity to be a leader in testing and operation of this transforming technology. We have submitted written comments in areas that we believe need revision or modification to ensure that manufacturers have the flexibility needed to efficiently conduct testing on the public roads here in California. Today, I would like to highlight some of the areas in the proposed regulations that we request to be revised. The first issue concerns the disengagement of the vehicles from autonomous mode to manual driving when testing. Google does not believe that the requirement to keep track of and provide an annual summary report of disengages, as proposed in Section 227.46, will provide the department with a means to evaluate the safety of vehicles being tested. Disengages are not a barometer of safety of the vehicle under test. While this technology is being developed and tested, disengagements by drivers occur for a wide variety of reasons. Indeed, the need to disengage from autonomous operation is largely left to the discretion of the driver. As drafted, this section of the rule could create the unintended consequence of providing a disincentive for drivers to disengage the autonomous technology. There are some cases where the vehicle notifies the driver to disengage. This often occurs for reasons as benign as vehicles about to operate in an area that has not been programmed. Disengagements are rarely related to true accidents of wooden situations. As such, disengaged data cannot and should not be used to evaluate the safe operation of the autonomous vehicle technology.
If you consider that one of the things that the department will have to go forward in the future, which is the general deployment of the vehicles, other than just a safety reason, isn't that type of information something that the department would want to know about in order to be able to evaluate the qualifications of people who will be operating the vehicles on the street?
Well, I think that getting information, not during testing and development, but as the department thinks about and considers the criteria and information that must be provided for operation on public roads in California, that's the time, I think, that you would really gather some additional information on what the safety case is, and what the safety dependencies are on the technology that you're going to deploy to understand it. But during the testing phase, where you're actually developing and testing and retesting, making changes, the information you would get from those kinds of activities would not be informative on sort of when a vehicle manufacturer has completed that and now is ready to sort of freeze its software, freeze its hardware, and sort of move into the phase of development that would substantiate a safety case for deployment, which is, you know, yet to be determined how that would work, but our view is that it's not useful information.
But with an annual report, wouldn't the department be able to see over time, you know, whether the disengagements that have happened over time, and the changes that have occurred, that you've adjusted to it, and therefore that's not really an issue into the future?
I think an actual just number account of how many there are is little of no use to the department, and the useful information would actually come from understanding, you know, the circumstances, and perhaps the feature set that's being tested by a manufacturer, which would certainly be confidential business information for any company. So, to give numbers without context seems to us to be an exercise which really could, A, undermine the driver's disengagement philosophy, but secondly, maybe this published information would mislead people into not understanding what it really meant until you give context for it, and the context really is in understanding exactly what the manufacturer is testing, how they're testing, and what might be the circumstances in which the disengagements actually occurred.
Well, we look forward to your suggestion and how we can obtain this information, such that we will be able to meet our obligation to, one, make sure that the technology is safe for deployment by the general public, and that those operators who would be in vehicles can be properly tested, and we can make a determination, as we do currently with drivers, that they're safe to operate the type of vehicles that they're operating.
Yeah, we look forward to having some further discussions about this issue, and what you may need to make some decisions about what could be safely deployed on California So, what we're suggesting is actually that this section be deleted. We think it's not, it does not further the interest of safety and evaluate adequately the safety during the development of the technology.
As we've probably stated about five or six times in the past, we understand your suggestion with respect to that, and that's the purpose of taking comments here. And that's the purpose of taking comments here. But it has been included as part of the regulatory proposal as something that the department may see that is necessary. But again, with respect to all the comments that we received today, we'll evaluate it and then make a determination as we prepare our final rulemaking package, whether or not that is something that we would see fit for excluding from the regulations.
We understand. The second, we're also requesting a small but important change in Section 227.24, Subsection B, relating to the testing on public roads. This subsection requires manufacturers to test autonomous vehicles under controlled conditions that simulate real-world conditions before testing on public roads. We do not object to this concept, but recommend that the rule make clear that such simulations can be computer-generated. Computer simulations are actually more valuable as they allow manufacturers to test their software under far more conditions and stresses than could possibly be achieved on a test track. Indeed, Google, for its part, has expended considerable resources developing computer simulations, collecting data of hundreds of thousands of miles on California roads and traffic conditions. Thus, we provide in our written comments a slight but specific change suggestion to this subsection that we believe could adequately address the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. A third issue involves the efficient processing of testing applications. The proposed regulation does not provide any timetable for the review of testing applications other than to require the DMV to notify a manufacturer whether the application is complete within 10 days after receiving it. To ensure manufacturers have some reasonable certainty that they can efficiently test and develop this innovative technology in the state of California, we ask that the rule include a requirement that the DMV act on testing applications within 60 days after making a determination that the application is complete. A related issue involves the DMV's processing of modifications to the testing permit. We ask that the modification process be streamlined to allow permitted manufacturers to promptly add new test vehicles or drivers. As drafted, the rule appears to require manufacturers submit a full testing permit application each time that we wish to add a driver or a vehicle to our testing program. We ask that either a new simplified form be created for such additions, or that the existing form, the OL 311, be amended to make clear that when such additions are sought, manufacturers only need to provide vehicle or driver identification as applicable. But most importantly, that the rule should also provide a mechanism for such additions to be promptly acted upon by the DMV, akin to how a person can register a car or obtain a driver's license by visiting a DMV office.
Thank you.
You want to comment on any of that, Ron?
No.
Okay. And finally, a fourth area included in our submission involves limited demonstrations of autonomous technology. Manufacturers need some flexibility to determine autonomous technology to people responsible for making future decisions about the technology's safety and operations. Because this is such a new and evolving technology that challenges longstanding perceptions about how vehicles are operated, it's critical that decision-makers be given the opportunity to experience firsthand the capabilities and promise of autonomous vehicles. And because a test track cannot effectively replicate the complexity of the public road environment, manufacturers should be given some flexibility to conduct such limited demonstrations on public roads. We ask that the testing rules incorporate some flexibility to allow limited demonstrations. Of course, to ensure safety, a fully trained autonomous vehicle test driver should be present in the vehicle during demonstrations, and the manufacturer should remain fully responsible for the vehicle.
I appreciate that comment, Ron.
Yep.
You know, one of the things that I pointed out earlier, that when we are drafting these regulations, we're constrained by what's actually in the statute that we're effectuating. And are you aware of any provision in Vehicle Code, Section 38-750, with respect to the testing of vehicles, that gives the department the flexibility to have someone sitting in the driver's seat who is not an employee, contractor, or designated, excuse me?
Okay, so I'm not a lawyer, but I've read the regs and I've talked to a lawyer or two. So I don't know that there isn't anything that expressly provides for it. I think our legal view is that there's nothing that expressly prohibits it. But we'd like to talk to you further about, you know, what you consider prohibited or not allowed by the statute in that regard, so.
I just think that you have to recognize that we're limited by what the language of the statute allows us to include. Excuse me. And a demonstration project isn't part of what is contemplated in the testing mode of the statute. So to the extent that you're making a recommendation of something that would expand the scope of the statute, that may violate one of the standards that the Office of Administrative Law would look at in approving our regulations. So we wouldn't want to walk into something at the outset that we know could lead to a disapproval of our regulatory package.
Yeah, okay. Well, we agree that we don't want you to do anything that you believe undermines the kind of the regulatory authority that you have given by the legislation. But I think we would like to have maybe our lawyers talk to you more explicitly about, you know, exactly how that can be interpreted, so. And then finally, in addition to the issues that are specifically mentioned here this morning, we have provided comments and suggested edits in other areas of the proposed testing regulation, suggested changes in definitions, requirements for driver qualifications, the term of the testing permit, accident reporting, vehicle registration and certificates of title, transfer of interest of title, and vehicles excluded from testing, or the other areas that we requested some change be considered. So I'd like to conclude by thanking the department for the excellent work in drafting the testing regulations. We look forward to continuing to work effectively with the DMV as it finalizes the regs and begins the next important and exciting step to develop regulations for the operation of autonomous vehicles here in California. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input, Ron.
Okay.
If I call your name in that and you did not wish to speak, I'm just going by the sign-in sheets that were given to me a few minutes ago. So I'm gonna go in. If I call you and you don't wish to speak, just identify yourself and shake your head. I have John, it looks like Tilma, from Mercedes-Benz. Do you wish to provide comment?
No.
No? Okay. Manolo Pollan from Personal Insurance Federation? No? Brandon Castillo from CTNS? Ralph Ong? No? Okay. Is there anyone who has not had the opportunity to come forward so far who would wish to provide some comments today? If so, please come forward, state your full name, spell your last name, and any organization that you may be affiliated with. Well, since we don't have any further speakers, as I said earlier in my introductory comments, we will continue to take written comments until the close of business today. If you have anything that you'd like to submit, you could leave it with one of the department representatives at the back of the room. You can send it to us electronically. I received several comments to my personal email box yesterday, and that's completely fine. We have another email address that's on the regulation notice. You could submit it to that email box as well. But the absolute close of our period for receiving any additional comments is close of business today, which is 5:00 PM Pacific Time. We'd like to thank all of you for attending today and specifically those of you who came forward with comments. We really appreciate those comments that you've given us. Our next steps would be to finalize this rulemaking package. If we have any additional changes to the text of the regulations that are substantive in nature, we would do an additional 15-day notice of a comment period. That would be to accept written comments on only those changes that we make as a result of the hearing today and as a result of the receipt of the comments. I often get asked as a timeline as to when everything will be done. Of course, once we get our process of reviewing, summarizing, and creating a final statement of reasons, which will take us several weeks, we would then have to submit it to the Office of Administrative Law for approval. That's about a 45-day process. So we're looking at something that's probably late spring or maybe early summer that we would have word on and approval of our regulatory package. Again, we appreciate all of your comments this morning and we thank you for attending. With that, we're going to close our hearing now. Thank you.